I think we'll get started, everyone, at six o'clock. Welcome, I'm Tom Crompray, Rockford resident, member of Rockford Board. We also have a couple of the Rockford Board members, Dave and Linda, in attendance. And we're just excited that all of you are here. We've got the Rockford Public Schools film crew here. And the purpose of this town hall is just for everyone, for the citizens of Rockford, to be able to meet candidates that are running for the Rockford School Board this year. So we have seven candidates running for four seats. The board is a staggered board. And what we'll do is we'll have everyone open up with two minutes of just tell us about yourself, a little bit about your history with Rockford. There's no wrong answer, a lot of open-ended questions. So two minutes for opening statements. And then we have three questions that we'll ask each of you. To keep that fair, I'll probably start with one side and then work to the other side and back to the middle. And then everyone will have two minutes to kind of close out on final thoughts, you know, very casual here, with the idea that those that can't be in attendance will have the ability to republish the recording so that you would be able to use it on social as well as some of the other platforms that we put it on. So any questions with that format? We've got a break right at 7:15 because we'll have a similar format with Rockford Council candidates coming in at 7:30, so.
You're not going to be the timekeeper, so.
Yes, the timekeeper, yes. Again, this whole night is, this whole night is very bipartisan, there's just, we're just here to have a conversation, to know all of you a bit better. So with that, Tricia, you're closest to me, I will start with two minutes of just tell us about yourself.
Okay, so my name is Tricia Anderson. I'm an incumbent running for a four-year seat on the school board. So my term that I ran for in 2022 was a two-year term because I took over for somebody that left their term midway. And I have two kids that are in the district. One attends Valley View Elementary, he's a fourth grader, and the other one is a new sixth grader, and he's, he's turning into a different kid, that's a whole nother story. So we've lived in Rockford since 2016, and you know, we came here for the school district. We, at that time, you know, when your kids are really little, you're not as involved. But the more your kids get older, the more you see things that you want to be a part of in supporting to, you know, help the district have what they need so that your kids can succeed. And so that's one of the reasons that I ran for school board in 2022. You know, and I had a lot of aspirations and things that I wanted to do as a school board member, but I learned a lot in the two years that I've been on the board. And, you know, I've learned that the school board is, it's not a one-man show, it's a whole entire group, and, you know, the board has one view, and that's how the board votes. And so I, you know, I live in the Highlands neighborhood, and I love living here, I love living close to downtown, I see a lot of familiar faces in the room, and, you know, this place is truly a village, and I'm happy to be a part of it.
Thank you. Keep everybody on their toes. Andrea, would you mind taking two minutes, tell us about yourself?
Hi, I'm Andrea Jacobson. My husband and I have been proudly called Rockford our home for the past 20 years. We moved here in 2004 when we got married. We have one son who has attended Rockford Public Schools since he started in DK at Meadowridge, and now he is a freshman this year, and he's in the marching band, and he is on the water polo team, which is where he's at tonight. We have always been active supporters as a family of Rockford's academic and co-curricular programs. You'll find us around at a variety of events, doing everything from fine arts to athletic competitions. We serve concessions, we chaperone trips, and I also judge and am a proud captain with Odyssey of the Mind. I have started volunteering with Rockford Public Schools in the classroom on field day and taping books together for the Book Hospital, and then I eventually joined the PTO at Lakes and became president of that. And once he left elementary school and I was at middle school, I was kind of like, well, what am I going to do to stay involved? I really still want to do something. And as chance happens, a position opened up on the board when somebody had resigned, and so I applied, interviewed, and was appointed into that role. So I served as a trustee on the Board of Ed from July of '21 through December of 2022. And since then, I have now been chairing our Interschool Advisory Council, which is our parent group that interfaces with administration and then representatives from all of our different booster organizations. And I'm running for a position on the school board now because I think Rockford is an incredible school district, and I want to help support the mission and vision of the district so that we can keep doing amazing things and have wonderful graduates. I'm committed to working with our administration so that we can ensure policies and programs help us meet the goals that are in the RAMS-12 strategic plan, and I want to help us continue to grow student achievement, make sound financial decisions, and improve communication.
Thank you. Jake, tell us a little bit about that.
All right. Hello, everyone, good evening. My name is Jake Himmelspock. I have been a Rockford resident since kindergarten, so a product of Rockford Public Schools. My wife and I have three kids, one just graduated from the schools. I've got a middle schooler and an elementary schooler, so really spreading the gamut there. And really, I started, my first term started in 2020, right when COVID was in the heat of things and all sorts of fun stuff was happening. But really, I wanted to run because I felt like I could help, I could help the school district. You know, I'm passionate about it, having been from here, growing up here, and being a part of the district. It's been a passion point of mine, and, you know, really felt like we could continue that work this time around. And you've heard it mentioned a little bit in terms of, you know, what's the role of a school board member? And I think if there's something I really want people to know about me and kind of what I would hope to bring to this position if I'm fortunate enough to get elected again is that it's really not about my agenda. It's really not. What it is about is that it's about the community's vision for what the district needs to accomplish, and pairing that with our educators' expertise to take that to the next level. And that is what the RAMS-12 strategy is all about, and so we're fortunate that that's, that is just coming out this year, we're still kind of refining and fine-tuning it, prioritizing some initiatives, but if I get elected again, my hope would be to really champion that and push that forward. Thank you.
Charlie?
Good evening, my name is Charlie Curtis, running for the Rockford School Board because I think I can bring some balance to the board and a little more conservative approach. I've had a background in education a long time ago. I have a master's degree from the University of Michigan in environmental science education, a degree in, from Calvin College, endorsement in learning disabilities. So I'm kind of familiar with the academic system, albeit it was quite a while ago that those degrees were achieved. But I have been married for 48 years, I have 10 grandchildren, five children, all married, mostly in the area. And my kids have been a big part of my life. I homeschooled for a while, I was a homeschool dad while my wife was the main person, worked in a group home for disadvantaged children. So I have a heart for kids and my grandkids, I want to see the best for them, I want to see that they are able to achieve at the highest level academically in the system. I'd like to be on the board to be able to work towards those ends and to solve problems. I kind of consider myself to be able to think a little bit outside the box, and I want to make sure that the problems are being addressed. I know Rockford does an incredible job in a lot of areas. I think things like the band, that was just spectacular, in my opinion, a great learning experience for kids. And I want to see things like that, experiential education, education that would give children a leg up in a trade. For example, I have two grandchildren that go to KISD.
Sorry.
And, sorry. I'm done.
Charlie?
Hi, my name is Kelly Ferrand, and I hope to earn your vote this evening. Originally nominated in 2020, I have served as the human resources chair, the curriculum chair, and I am the current vice president of the school board. I am also the daughter of a public school elementary teacher and the mother of a Rockford High School sophomore. I've also spent the last six years working for the Breckin Camp Association, a national nonprofit in service to the more than 15,000 summer camps in the United States who annually serve 26 million kiddos. My work there as a chief marketing officer has been a really exceptional experience. I'm here today to share my commitment to building belonging. I believe in creating purposeful and intentional environments where all students experience belonging and feel valued. I believe in increasing teacher and staff compensation, and I have a record of advocating for increased pay and classroom resources. I also believe in prioritizing mental health, safety, and supporting student success. I believe in student success even through innovative curriculum strategies like requiring our AP seminar class of all high school sophomores, even if my own son might find this a little annoying. Importantly, I'm also endorsed by REA and RESPA.
Thank you. Derek?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Derek Schubert. I've lived in Rockford since 2000, 2001, I can't remember the date that we actually moved here, but we had lived in the northwest side, and me and my wife moved up here partially because she was working for a Marine. We've been in the area for, you know, since then, I think we've actually had about four houses or moved four times in Rockford since then, I kind of lost count. But been living here for a while, and I have a daughter that's a junior at U of M, product of the Rockford High School system, and I have two freshmen that are currently enrolled in Rockford Public Schools. As a matter of fact, I'm heading out of here after this to go to one of my daughter's field hockey games. So been very, very ingrained with the community over the past 20, 25 years. One of the reasons that I'm running for school board, quite honestly, is through my experiences through work, I've worked in multiple cultures, I've worked with multiple customers, I've worked with very, very difficult situations where you are having to manage a lot of different opinions and a lot of different perspective on things. One of the things that I'm hoping to bring to the school board, you know, Charlie alluded to this a little bit, but, you know, I have a knack for kind of taking complex situations, complex problems, and trying to put those into manageable solutions and, you know, manageable outcomes. I think that first and foremost is probably the thing and the skill that I will be able to bring to the council. I don't run the school board, and I'll come with a lot of, you know, kind of predispositions on a lot of the topics, a lot of issues. You know, again, a lot of what I, a lot of my strengths come in taking, you know, the input of others, taking in the data, and coming to some viable outcomes for folks. I've also gotten a lot more interested in the school board, a couple of other reasons. My wife's been a parapro at Valley View and now Edgerton, subbing in there for the last, for the last four years, including the COVID timeframe. And so just kind of hearing her come back from work and hearing some of the things that she's dealing with, or she's had to manage, or the great experiences she had in school, just really inspired me a bit to contribute. You know, I'm at a point in my life where, you know, career-wise, I can take the time to do it, and I'm really looking forward to it. And just, I guess, a little bit on a softer note, you know, it's a little bit, as I kind of get a little bit older, you know, I kind of look back to my grandpa, who served in school board fashion in my hometown and kind of.
That's a good time, so I'm sorry.
Yep.
Jason?
All right, I get to go last. I'm Jason Peterson, I'm a native of the Thumm and Tri Cities area. Spent a lot of time in some other states going through my education and my early years of my career. Been back here in Michigan, in the Rockford area, for the last eight years. I'll tell you my dirty secret, so that way it doesn't come out later. Back in the day, I graduated from the school that were Ralph Munkler's rivals before he moved to Rockford, so don't hold it against me. I never had to play against him because he left two years before I started playing football in high school. But now I'm here, I'm impressed with what I've seen here as a school, as a community, I've enjoyed my eight years here. I've got a lot of experience in nonprofit boards. I've been chairman of statewide adoption and mental health agency boards, elder care, housing, all kinds of different areas, so I know a lot about board governance, and I think that diverse experience of board governance could help me help this board to improve its level of representation. I've got experience in education from early childhood for 18 years, all the way to being a college professor for four. So I've kind of known all those different levels, as well as I've got experience in public, private, parochial, homeschool, charter school, and I think that diversity is a plus, not a minus, because I can bring in those perspectives that you wouldn't see in a public school sort of monopoly sort of attitude. At heart, I'm an academic, but I graduated with a degree in arts, so I have a theater major, music musician. So I appreciate that about Rockford, that we have that well-rounded extracurricular curriculum sort of focus. And I'm hoping to bring some of that balance to the board and to help, especially my background as an academic, maybe in curriculum areas, because, as I'll probably answer in some later questions, I've seen some areas we could be better even though we're already good.
Well, Jason, I'll let you pull the next thread and lead off on the first questions. We have three questions, again, two minutes to answer this question. This is the only multi-part question of the three. Describe your involvement in the Rockford School District as well as any relative experience that you believe would qualify you for a school board member. So I'll repeat that. Describe your involvement in the Rockford School District, part one.
All right.
Part two, any relative experience that you believe would qualify you as a school board member?
My involvement in the Rockford School District, I'd say my biggest area is, I tend to focus on the secondary students. So my wife and I have six kids, three Rockford students, three future Rockford students. And we've kind of divided and conquered on how we handle their schooling, right? Because so she's the preschool teacher, she handles the elementary students, and I'm the professor, so I handle our secondary students, when we kind of do conferences and we do different things. And so my most involvement has actually been at the secondary level with the band. I am their prop builder, I am their instrument repair person for the front ensemble and other percussion instruments, and I also load trucks, because I used to be a roadie, talk about diverse experiences. So that's my biggest area of involvement, this time of year, that's like a second full end job. Well, the experience, I already mentioned my ton of nonprofit board experience, so I think that's a big thing. And I think as a college student, or college professor, that experience is good as well. I can't see that, but I hope I'm doing okay. The role I had is, I have obviously theological commitments of my own, right? You can see I'm in uniform, I don't own any other professional attire, so this is what I'm stuck with. But I was teaching at a public college, so I had to design a curriculum where I can teach the content of the major world religions and how to study religion academically without pushing that on people, and I think that's something I would bring to the board, is the ability to see that as someone who's experienced it, rather than, I think a lot of educators often see that as a blind spot. I actually taught a course to my fellow professors on how to respect the religious conscience in the humanities classroom at the college, because many of them, they would have commitments of their own, and they couldn't help but sort of push those on their students, not even realizing.
Derek, again, the question, describe your involvement in the Rockford School District as well as any relative experience that you believe would qualify you as a school board member?
Yeah, no problem. I'll say this, from a direct curriculum perspective, limited engagement within the Rockford Public School system. You know, I just haven't been that involved, you know, directly or, you know, from an educational perspective. Indirectly, been a youth sports coach, you know, throughout, you know, throughout my 20 years here, whether that's, you know, working within the Rockford youth programs or even in some of the middle school programs, you know, supporting from an assistant coach perspective, you know, going so far as to, you know, being a sponsor for less fortunate kids so that they can get involved in those sports activities. I'd say the other indirect engagement I've had, I've had a lot of teacher friends. You know, we spend a lot of time chatting, you know, talking about some of the things that they see in the classroom, some of the things that they would like to see improvements on. So we have some pretty open-ended questions on things that they would like to see done differently. In terms of some of the skills that I have, you know, that suit me for being a trustee on the school board, you know, I hit it towards this at the opening, but, you know, again, I've managed some pretty complex budgets, some pretty complex projects, I've managed some pretty diverse, you know, folks in getting to kind of different outcomes and, you know, making sure that, you know, a truck can get a gate out, or get a truck can get a product out in, you know, Trednus in Amsterdam at three o'clock in the morning. So it's just kind of that complexity, you know, managing the big budgets that go along with those projects and coordinating the people that go along with it, you know, that's probably the biggest skill attribute that prepares me for the school board.
Thank you. Kelly, I'll direct a question to you again. If you'd like me to repeat it, I don't mind.
Let's do it one more time.
Yep. Describe your involvement in the Rockford School District as well as any relative experience that would qualify you as a school board member.
Yeah, so as a parent, I was incredibly involved in elementary school holiday parties. In fact, I have guiltily brought glitter into an elementary school classroom. I apologize to the janitors every day now with a greater understanding of the impact that glitter may have had long-term. I've always been a great supporter of teachers. As the daughter of a teacher, I am a huge fan, and one of the things that actually I've done with Andrea is that we've taken time to go before school and make smoothies for an entire building full of classroom teachers and staff. And there is nothing better than handing a fresh smoothie to a teacher in a surprise way at 7:30 in the morning, because I think that it's the kind of thing that shows that we understand the extra mile that teachers go. Because I don't know any teachers that stop working at 7:00 or 8:00 or 9:00 p.m., right? They work really hard, and I think that as a parent, there's little things that we can do every day to demonstrate our support of our teachers, and that's one of the many ways that I've done that. In my professional life, I've been a lifelong marketing professional. I've led huge teams, I've put on great big trade shows, I've gone to market with hundreds and hundreds of products. But I think importantly, in the last six years, I've learned a lot about the world of out-of-school time and summer camp. You know, the summer camp industry is incredibly diverse, it's for-profit and nonprofit, it's Girl Scouts, and it's JCC camps, and it's a little bit of everything in between in every state in this country. And so understanding how out-of-school time programs are regulated differently in a state-by-state basis has really increased my understanding of youth development in a broad diversity of spaces and in a lot of different kinds of thought. And so I brought that insight into my role on the school board, but I also have come to understand that the most important thing that you bring as a board member is your ability to be curious and work with others. And I'm incredibly grateful for getting to work with such smart people.
Charlie, describe your involvement in the Rockford School District as well as any relative experience that you believe would qualify you to be a school board member.
So we moved up here about 2017, and on top of that, we moved a couple of times and built a house. So we were pretty busy doing that, and we have grandchildren in here, so, you know, we chauffeur and go to games and things like that. I have, I taught in the past in a developmental center, I, you know, had experience in a group home for troubled youth, doing kind of correspondence-type management teaching. So I have some experience there, I've been the president of my condo association. So I have some leadership skills in that area and problem-solving. And, you know, my background in Rockford is fairly limited, but I'm concerned about the school, the school system is so important to the community, and I began attending board meetings maybe two years ago on a fairly regular basis. And basically to kind of see what's going on in the school district and understand it from that perspective and be able to share, you know, my perspective, my thoughts, seems to be, you know, it's a spot where there's open communication at a board meeting, and I felt like that that was a good opportunity for me to be able to express myself and to look for areas that maybe need improvement. So I'm interested in, Rockford has such a history of excellence, but I think, I don't see, in my opinion, I don't see problem-solving as one of the things that I have encountered too much of, and I'd like to, I'd like to bring that perspective to the school board, is being able to look at problems and to be able to deal with them in an effective way.
Hi.
Jake, please describe your involvement in the Rockford School District as well as any relative experience that you believe would qualify you as a school board member.
Absolutely. So deep history with Rockford, again, as a graduate, also a lot of family in the district, so my mother worked for the schools for a long, long time, we're at the River Valley Academy. My sister, my wife, my brother-in-law, all worked for the school district. There is a lot of passion there, it's had a big impact on our lives in a lot of different ways. Before anything, though, I'm a father, and I'm a father of three students, of course, one just graduated, so it's your dad for one of them. But also an incumbent for the school board, so that's been another way I've been involved, working with the team, the community, and the staff here for the last four years through some tricky times, to solve a lot of problems, and to solve them the best we can for the whole of the community. And so that's been a big piece. I'm also part of the Rockford Area Community Foundation Board, so I serve in that capacity as well. You may have heard of Rockford's Got Talent, that's kind of our big thing there, so putting on dinners, hosting events, and giving out scholarships, and just helping the broader Rockford community, raising money for our library, things like that. I also have been endorsed by the teachers and support staff through the REA and RESPA, as well as the Michigan Education Association, so MEA has also endorsed me as a candidate that they feel would be strong for our district. So involved in it as a father, as a volunteer, as a student, as someone who's passionate about the district, not just the schools, but the community as a whole. And as Charlie mentioned, so intertwined, the schools and the community. So as one does better, the next continues to grow, so hoping to continue that journey.
Thank you. Andrea, please describe your involvement in the Rockford School District as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to be a school board member.
So I touched on quite a bit of my volunteer work with the district in my intro, so I'll speak a little bit more about some of my professional experience. I have been a litigation paralegal with the same firm in Grand Rapids for over 20 years. And so as part of my day-to-day work, I take difficult situations, I research, I look at what's applicable, and I look at things from both sides. And analyzing and research comes really firsthand to me, and it's something that I enjoy. And I've brought that experience to the board before, when I was appointed as a trustee, and I got to chair the policy committee, and that was something that I really enjoyed and a lot of people would really probably not enjoy. And I'm a MASB certified board member, I completed quite a variety of classes during my time on the board, and I like learning how I can be most effective in that role, not only to serve the board, but to serve the community interests. I have volunteered with quite a few different groups through the area, in the school and outside, including a charitable foundation that services one of our, that was started by one of our students who has a pediatric cancer, and we're excited to keep working with them and fundraising to support those families. I still work with a variety of teams, including the band and water polo and swim. I attend pack meetings at the middle school there, and I'm waiting for the first one at the freshman center. I lead the Interschool Advisory Council, and I will be, we have our first meeting for that next week, so we're looking forward to kicking that off, getting to know all the different booster groups this year. And I also was endorsed by REA and RESPA and MEA as somebody who has the best interests of the Rockford Public Schools. of the Rockford Public Schools.
Thank you. Tricia, please describe your involvement in the Rockford School District, as well as any relative experience that would qualify you to be a school board member.
Pardon me? So as far as my involvement in Rockford Public Schools, as I mentioned earlier, I have, I have two kids, fourth grader and sixth grader. And, you know, I, in my regular job, I have a lot of night meetings, and so my goal was always to join the PTO and be really active in that realm, but it never happened. So I continued to volunteer my time in, during the school day when I can. It was a lot easier to do that before COVID. So I always was at all the parties and all the, you know, I volunteered once a week in my son's kindergarten class. And then they cut the parties off, which is fine, for good reason. And so I, instead, I do chaperoning field trips and, you know, I'm, I'm the biggest cheerleader for my kids at their sports events, when they played soccer and when they played, I've got one in Little League, I've got one playing football now. So I'm, I'm out there a lot at all of their stuff. And I always support Valley View and all of their initiatives and their fundraising. So whenever I have an opportunity to financially support the PTO, I do, especially through the Valley View Voyage, that's their big fundraising event. And so I always go on the walk on the Voyage around the neighborhood. That's one of my favorite things to do with the school. You know, and I've, and I've also been, I don't know if you call this involved in the district, but I've been a real squeaky wheel with food service since my son was in kindergarten, my, my sixth grader who was in kindergarten. I've always wanted to see what I could do to get the school lunch to be just a little bit better, because we're so good at all the things. And so I've, oh, that's my time already? Holy cow. Okay. I'm a former teacher also.
Squeeze that in. Second question, and the next two questions are just single-part questions. Derek, I'm gonna ask you to lead off. If elected, what is your number-one priority as a school board member?
Putting that pretty limited. I'm gonna say first and foremost, my biggest bias and my top priority is going to make sure our teachers are supported, whether that is through, you know, financial gain, whether that's the bonuses, whether that's through extra pairers and pairs in the classroom, whether that's extra resources and academic tools. However we can best support our teachers is going to be the thing that I'm probably keyed out in the most, because it all really starts there. You know, if the classroom is successful, if the classroom is stable, if the teachers are engaged, you know, everything else kind of takes care of itself. You know, whether you're talking about kids being more engaged from a learning perspective, you know, whether you're talking about kids feeling safe and secure in the classroom, if the teacher feels supported, the students are gonna feel supported, and the classroom's gonna be supported. So that first and foremost to support the teachers is gonna be my biggest priority.
Kelly, I'll direct that question to you next. If elected, what is your number-one priority as a school board member?
Yeah. So the priority of the entire board is Rams Twelve, right? That is the number-one priority of the entire board, is to support the district's endeavor to complete all of the pillars highlighted by Rams Twelve, including academic excellence, wellness and preparedness, social responsibility and community engagement, building a collaborative culture and organizational effectiveness. Those are the pillars of Rams Twelve. I personally am incredibly involved in innovating in the mental health space, right? If we look at some of the OK to Say stats, so Michigan Public Schools use a platform called OK to Say. Seventy percent of Michigan teens see mental health as a major struggle for their peers. In Rockford, we continue to address the needs of the whole child while also focusing on school safety and building a positive culture of belonging and hope. In fact, let's talk about hope. Hope is a cognitive process. It's a way of thinking rather than an emotion. And the reason that this is so important is because it's something that can be taught. It's something that can be nurtured. Hope is a belief that the future will be better today and that we have the power to make it so. So I believe that everyone here is here because you have hope that tomorrow will be a better day for our students. Let me tell you, you've already made a huge investment by sending your kids to Rockford Public Schools. Our graduates see remarkable success in college and career pathways, believe our buildings ready to take on the world, and so you have a right to have hope. We all have hope. Rockford has invested in brilliant therapy programs for dogs in our buildings, and we've invested in a ton of additional mental health staff and implemented remarkable new programs, but there's so much more we can all do. I would encourage every parent here to go home and talk to your kids about how they can build a culture of belonging in their classroom. Sometimes it's as easy as saying hi to a kid you've never said hello to before.
Jason, if elected, what is your number-one priority as a school board member?
All right, well, if you were to still down that number-one priority, I guess you could say it in three words, is avoid all excesses. My interest in school policy in that way goes all the way back to when I was a student. A lot of you can still remember the days when we had compulsory school prayer, right? And then we corrected that, because, I mean, I don't want the Buddhist teacher teaching my kid how to pray any more than you want me, than, let's say, the Hindu mom wants me teaching her kid how to pray. So that was a good avoiding of excess. The trouble is, if you remember the nineties, we jumped over to the other extreme, right? Martin Luther, the guy who's credited for starting the church I'm part of, talked about human nature being like a drunken peasant trying to get off a horse, right? We fall off the right side, and in our effort to correct ourselves, we fall off the left. And so in the nineties, I got to participate as a student activist in trying to restore the religious rights of students. And we found the sweet spot eventually, right? That school-led religious exercise is largely to be avoided, while student-led exercise is largely to be unlimited, provided it meets the neutrally enforced rules of the school. I think we have a similar danger today, that on the issues of our day, while we're correcting excesses of the past, it's entirely possible we're going to jump to a new excess. In an attempt to include some students, we're gonna exclude others. In an attempt to fix one bias, we're gonna introduce the opposite bias. So one of my goals would be to help us find that sweet spot right away, instead of falling off the other side of the horse before we finally find it. Help Rockford be the place that leads finding that center spot, rather than going into excess. And that's why I'm in favor of things like academic integrity, I've already talked about, personal liberty, which I think has been infringed in the past, as well as parental authority, which of course is a topic of controversy at the moment in the district. There's, you know, there's, there's ongoing lawsuit about that.
Thank you. Charlie, if elected, what is your number-one priority as a Rockford School Board member?
So my number-one priority, I think, would be bringing up the reading level of students as, in the academic side. My immediate number-one priority would be dealing kind of what I would call the elephant in the room. And that's how Rockford Schools deals with sexuality issues and gender identity issues. And I think what's, what's been happening over the last four years is enrollments have been declining, and that's, to me, that is a very serious thing. There's over, three, four years ago, the enrollment was eighty-one hundred, now it's down to seventy-seven hundred. And, and there's a debate about reasons, but this is happening. Parochial schools, charter schools are, have waiting lists, and Rockford is hurting for students, they're advertising for students. And the reason I believe that's happening is because there, there's a certain cohort of parents that do not, that, that do not want what Rockford's producing. They don't wanna be doing pronouns all the time. They don't wanna be doing gender issues. They don't wanna be confronted with these things for their indoctrinating concepts for their children, and they're looking for safer alternatives. And I, I believe, this is an existential problem, and it needs to be talked about on how to deal with this thing. Parents don't want, you know, Biden's Title IX to be enforced in Rockford Schools. They, they don't want pornographic books that their children can have access to. There's a lot of things they don't want, and they're resisting putting, and I, I've been out and about a lot, and, and there's so many parents I'm talking to that say, I don't want my children in that environment. And the declining enrollments existent, if this continues, it's an existential problem, not only to the school, but to the community itself.
Tricia, if elected, what is your number-one priority as Rockford School Board member?
So my number-one priority is to vote, is to make my vote count, and vote in the direction that the, the experts and the, the people who are, who have made it their life's work to do research and, you know, support these people who are trying to get out the, they're trying to help us see, here's, here's the research, and here is, here's what we want to implement. We're the experts, and the board takes those recommendations. We don't do the research ourselves, and we follow those recommendations if we think that they are appropriate and they support kids and teachers and our schools in general. And so, you know, my number-one priority is to, is to be on this board and vote a certain way that supports those things. I don't have a specific hidden agenda. I don't have a number-one thing that I want to accomplish while on the board, besides being able to see these things come across our, our board dais that we have to vote on related to Rams Twelve, because these are the goals of this, of the school district. And, you know, the, I think the goal of the district is to create a welcoming, safe place for all kids, and so our curriculum needs to reflect that, our policies need to reflect that, our buildings and, 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 you know, spaces within each facility.
Go quick. Andrea, I'll direct a question to you. If elected, what is your number-one priority as a Rockford School Board member?
So as I previously said, my number-one priority would be supporting the implementation of the strategic plan. And that is a plan that was developed based on community input. It was not developed in a vacuum by our administration or our board. There was feedback from students, parents, community members, business leaders, and that plan tells me what our community wants our district to be doing. And using that plan and that feedback, our district has developed a mission and a vision. They've got our pillars of what we wanna do, and we're working on implementing action steps for accomplishing the goals. And one of the M.A.S.B. classes I had previously taken as a board member was strategic plan development. And one of the main takeaways I had from that and that I really enjoyed was how every decision we make as a board should tie back to that strategic plan, and how does it relate? And we should be supporting that plan with the work that we do. And so we need to be tracking the data and following it along. It's great to say that you have a goal of improving communication, but what does that look like? Okay, we know here it looks like at a minimum, updating the website. All right, now we've got a contract for that. What are the deliverables? When is that gonna be? And so you need to track those things so that you're accomplishing that. And so I wanna see us working on the academic excellence through our new elementary curriculum, through supporting our teachers with their PLCs on the early release date, so that we can ensure that all of our students across the district have the same educational experience, whether they're at Edgerton, or Lakes, or Valley View, that all of our kids are getting a great education.
Jake, if elected, what is your number-one priority as a number of Rockford School Board?
The students are my number-one priority. So the students will always be number-one, and to make sure that each student is seen and heard and felt welcomed and comfortable, and we provide a space where they feel like they can learn. So what does that mean for me personally? I think it means a lot of what I had mentioned previously. It means not having an agenda, but championing, being a champion of the agenda that our community put together with the guidance of our expert educators. As Andrea mentioned, this, the Rams Twelve goals was put together by students, past students, parents, and a broad swath of community members. It's not about, you know, my agenda, it's not about my vision, it's not about what a few people say, it's about what our community is looking for and what our, what our district needs. So, so in order to put students first, I think we have to have strong support for our teachers and our support staff, because they are the ones who have an impact on our students every day. And, and our students are dealing with a lot. And especially right now, two of the biggest issues are, are mental health for our students and making sure that they're cared for. They're dealing with a lot of stress, some of that school-related, of course, you know, the typical social things that kids go through, but social media doesn't help any of that, and it only exaggerates it. And how do we start to help combat that, you know, in the ways that we can, helping people, helping students understand, you know, how to deal with their emotions so they can, they can be open to learn in the, in the learning environment? Part of supporting teachers is ensuring that we have sustainable funding for our district. A lot of people get confused with our operational budget versus our capital expenditures, two different, two different pools. Our, we are minimally funded district, and we need to change that in order to continue to support our, our, our staff.
One more question, and we move to closing statements. I want to thank all of you for just keeping track on time. We're doing great. So, thank you. Jake, I'm gonna have you lead this one off. This is the final one-part question. How do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District? Yeah? I'll repeat that one more time. How do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
Yeah, multiple ways. So one is, you know, as a school board member, we're not supposed to get involved in the day-to-day, get into the weeds, and we're supposed to work through the superintendent to make sure that things are happening smoothly. So one way, again, I'm gonna go back to the Rams Twelve strategy, one way is to see that we're fulfilling on that promise and fulfilling on that strategy. The other way is to listen to our community. So, you know, we get emails, we will get messages posted, we'll see people in the community who have thoughts and concerns. You know, a few years back, we had a particular student that was experiencing a lot of racial difficulty, you know, people were picking him, picking on him because of his race. And, you know, the best thing I could do is, is provide a lending here to that student, his parents, voice those concerns with our admin team, and, and try to, try to, you know, keep that on people's radars, you know? So the, the district has, and the admin team has, a ton of things that they need to achieve just in the day-to-day. And so one of the benefits that we as a board can bring, without getting into the weeds, is just kind of keeping a high-level view on, hey, you know, how are we doing against some of these things? How are we doing with our strategic goals? How are we doing with this? How are we doing that? And just asking the questions and keeping it on the front, in the front of their minds to, as something to pursue. So as someone who has, you know, in my, in my professional life, I deal with, MBA with, focused on innovation and change. And so I deal with a lot of helping organizations navigate change, and our students are facing tons of change every day. And our district, our school education is facing a lot of change. So my hope is to, to continue to champion those perspectives, be a listening, listening ear, and help keep our strategy and the concerns of our parents and students top of mind for our, our district.
Charlie, I'll direct the question to you. How do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
First off, I'd, I'd like to make sure parents are in control of their children's education, that they are always involved in every decision that is made in, in the, in the educational process. I see that what happened with the Meads situation and the lawsuit that, that came out of that is that, that the parents were ignored, the parents were lied to, and the parents basically were deceived by, by the school system about what was happening with their daughter. And I, I think that, that's why I think that, that this is the elephant in the room, that we have to deal with this. This cannot continue to be, parents cannot continue to be fearful that these type of things are happening to their children. things are happening to their children. And we need to change that. And my, I didn't really get to the meat of what I was going to suggest, but I, I feel like there should be a community ad hoc committee that studies the issue of gender, what to do when a child feels like he wants to transition and how to deal with this. And I feel like there should be a community group of trusted leaders that come together and advise RPS on, on how to handle these situations because what happened with the Meads and what, what we don't know, they're, they're defending the right to do that right now, basically the school system is. And, and I think that case needs to be settled. We don't want our tax dollars going to this. And I think that we need, the school system is, is doing exactly the wrong thing on how to handle this and it needs some advice from the outside, not from me telling them what to do, but advice from a, a broad spectrum of community leaders in order to deal with this problem in an effective way that's not driving parents and children out of the district, but making sure there's happy parents, happy children that, that want to come into the district.
Okay.
Andrea, how do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
So, kind of like along the lines of what Jake had said, as a board member and trustee, you're not involved in the day-to-day going on in a classroom. You're working with the administration and the teachers who are doing that work. They're the professional educators. We aren't. And one of the ways that I think we can advocate for our students is actually to listen to our teachers, listen to our counselors, listen to our building administrators who are there and with those students day-to-day and what do they need from us? What can the district provide to help them do their job better and support their students better? Is that different, you know, math manipulatives that they need so that they can teach math curriculum better? Is it, we need a new elementary literacy curriculum because what we had before wasn't working? And so, I think one of the best ways we can advocate is actually by listening and then looking and seeing how we can support that work that our teachers are doing every day. You know, we provide a, a lot of services to our students that not everybody even knows about. We have the therapy dogs that are in seven of our different buildings that are an amazing resource. And one was helping a child who was having a bad day last week and couldn't make it in the door of the building. And then they did. You know, we have our new partnership with R E F and Pine Rest, providing a variety of services free of charge to our families and our staff that can help support them as they go through a bunch of different struggles. So, I think that one of the best things that we can do is just listen to what our people need and how we can support our staff and our teachers for our students.
Jason, how do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
The way to advocate for children in the district, I believe, is again, that same principle of avoiding excess. And there's a lot of talk about structure, right? That the superintendent, the administration does day-to-day, but the board does set policy which governs the way they do that day-to-day. So, my experience with board governance is that we can set limitations, we can set standards by which it's done. And in doing so, advocate for children and students. One thing often I think we mistake is if you think of school as a provider-client relationship, the school is the provider, the child is not the client, the parent is the client. If you look at state law, the way it's written, if you look at Supreme Court decisions over the years, ultimately, the parent is the school's client and the parent, the school supports the parent's duty to educate their child. And so, I think board policy can allow us to avoid that as one of the excesses. One example of this you might see is this is the second election cycle. I've heard a lot of talk about mental health. I've got a lot of background in that and I think I know a bit about it. One of the concerns I would have is how do we improve student mental health, aid student mental health without violating parental authority? For example, as I refer out to mental health providers, I have a really hard time finding providers that share some of the same ethical commitments I do, that I can be confident that they're going to work with me on my client rather than against me and against my, what I think is my client's best interest. So, I'd be an example of that. So, I think in doing that, the board can represent the parents and taxpayers of the district in really improve that representative nature in setting policy for those people that are doing the thing.
Derek, how do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
First, I want to commend Jake for his comment earlier on the devil, so to speak, of social media that's coming with a daughter that has come through junior high. It is such the anxiety accelerator. It's unbelievable. So, I appreciate the fact that that's something the current school board does take seriously. How I would advocate, so, you know, kind of staying aligned to some of the things and some of the themes we've been talking about, you know, I've seen some of the drafts for the, you know, the Rockford 12 and, you know, there's some good things in there, right? So, being an advocate for that and making sure that those things are coming to fruition is going to be important. But I think the best way to advocate for our child is children, speak a little bit for me personally, engage, 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 right? You know, whether the parents are the client or whether the students are the client, you know, it doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, it's the students that are going to be in the classroom. It's the students that are going to be consuming the services from Rockford Public Schools and really enabling themselves to be better individuals as they grow into adulthood. And again, the best way to do that, engage, engage, engage. Get the dialogue, get the feedback, figure out what's not working in the schools, figure out what is working, you know, accelerate and improve upon the things that are working and, you know, try to figure out how to manage the things that aren't. And you don't get that without dialogue. I know it's hard sometimes. We grew up in this society now where, you know, a lot of us are transactional with our kids, you know, some families are more engaged than others. You know, we just gotta, we have to make sure that that feedback that we get from our kids is accounted for at the end of the day. It's the best way to do it. I, you know, personally with, you know, my daughter going through middle school, yeah, I, it was, it was, you know, my first daughter was easy, no problems, easy peasy. She got in, got out, everything was great. But with the second daughter, you know, it had, it was a lot more engagement. And that's something considering the fact, I think somebody mentioned mental health and getting to, you know, counselors. It's hard, you know? It is very hard at this point, which actually puts more strain back on the schools. So, yeah, at the end of the day, the best thing we do is talk to our kids, you know, bring that up to the group, bring that up to the board.
Tricia, how do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
So, I can't remember if I mentioned this earlier. There's so much I want to say and then I keep running out of time. So, as school board members, we serve on committees. And, you know, I happen to serve on the curriculum committee, the policy committee and the building and site committee. And, you know, being, being able to sit on these committees and ask questions and learn about how, what the process is to develop new curriculum and what the process is for, you know, like where the money comes from to be able to implement, you know, the addition at the middle school and, you know, like where we're going to be able to, where we're going to be able to allocate funds so that we can get air conditioning at each of our schools. I love being a part of these committees because I ask questions, because I'm a parent and I'm also a neighbor and I'm just, I'm a person in the community that people ask a lot of questions about because I sit on the school board. But I, I often see myself as kind of a liaison between neighbors and other parents and the, the administration because, you know, when you're advocating for kids, you're not solving the problem, but you're connecting parents with the people that can solve problems. You know, and so, whenever we have the opportunity to support teachers and, and support policies that, you know, affect the whole child, whether we're talking about mental health, so, social emotional health, physical health, you know, which is lunch. All of these needs have to be met and they come from so many different directions. And so, whenever we have opportunities to support policies that benefit the whole child, you know, that's the best way to advocate for our students.
Kelly, how do you plan to advocate for our children in the Rockford School District?
Yeah. So advocacy, in my mind, I almost immediately jump to Lansing and, and D C, right? It is our role as parents and as school board members in partnership with our superintendent to advocate for our district. And when I think about one of the most important priorities for our district, it's safety. And for context, in 2023, there were 349 school shootings in the United States and so far in 2024, there have been 232. Children and teens are more likely to die by guns than anything else in the United States. However, we are incredibly fortunate in Rockford. We have a robust security department led by Scott Beckman. We have an amazing school resource officer program. We have mental health professionals working in tandem with security. And one of the things that I think that we know in Rockford is we know our kids. And one of the ways that I know that is that I see our security teams in the hallways. I see Scott Beckman at the front door of the high school, opening the door and, and saying hello to every kid that walks through those doors because he knows our kids. But we need more and, and public schools in the United States need more resources for safety and for mental health. And so, that means advocating for additional funding in Lansing and in D C.
Thank you. Before we start closing arguments, I just want our statements, I should say. There are four seats for seven of these very qualified and talented candidates. So, I would encourage you, all of them have social media platforms, all of them are members of the community. Well, after closing statements from each one of them, I'm sure many of them will hang out in the hall and get to know you a little bit better. So, with that, Andrea, I'm going to ask you to lead things off. All of you will have two minutes just to close things out and provide your closing statements to the group here.
So, I would be honored and privileged to have your vote to be serving as a board of education trustee again for Rockford Public Schools. I'm here to support our district and our students and our teachers and all of our staff. I think we have a, a gem of a district. Everywhere I go and people hear that I'm from Rockford or my son goes to our schools here, they have nothing but great things to say to us. And there is always work to be done to keep improving. You know, we ranked 10th in academic achievement on M-Step this last time. We can work hard. We can be ninth or eighth or seventh. We can always build up. We can give our kids the skills that our community has asked for when they graduate, the critical thinking, the writing, the proficiencies that they need to be able to succeed in a career or at college. And at the end of the day, all of our students deserve to feel that they belong. And I think right now, we have a lot of opportunities for our kids and I'd like to see us keep providing those opportunities so everyone can have somebody that is like them, be that through a co-curricular or a classroom or a staff member, but that all of our students feel safe and belonging, recognized, supported, and they walk out of our doors at the end of 10th grade with an education that's going to equip them to survive in college or be successful in a career and be a good community member. These kids are going to be our doctors, our lawyers, our clubbers, everybody that we need to rely on in the future and we need to do our best by those kids.
Tricia, I'll hand it over to you for closing remarks.
So, if I have not mentioned this before, because I don't think I have time, I too am endorsed by the teachers' union and the support staff union, R E A and R S P A, and also endorsed by Michigan Education Association. And, you know, I feel like my, my spot on this school board is important because when I vote for things, it's for the benefit of all kids and it's not for just a certain group of kids. And our teachers deserve to have people on the school board that will support them and support decisions that need to be made so that they can have, you know, time with their professional learning communities. You know, I'm a former teacher. I used to teach biology and I was in a district where our school board was not the awesomest. It was not the most supportive. And, and that was hard. I felt really disconnected. I felt like I didn't have the resources. But seeing what Rockford does in this district with, you know, all of the different procedures that are in place to support teachers and kids, I want to be a part of that and I want to continue, I want to be, you know, I want to be one of the people that helps to move that forward. And I feel like my experience on the board, you know, I worked with lots of different boards and committees as a, as an urban planner, planning consultant. And, you know, I, I see a lot of good relationships between communities and schools and I want to just continue to be part of that.
Yeah, a couple, yeah, a couple more seconds.
Oh. Vote for Tricia.
Derek, you have two minutes for closing remarks.
All right, thanks. First, I just want to say thanks upfront even just for coming here and then even just for considering me as November comes up long. You know, as I said at the opening, I'm at a point in my life where I can really give back to the community that supported me through the last 20 years, supported my kids through the last 20 years. So, I do appreciate the privilege of running for the school board and obviously your consideration. You know, similar to some of the other comments that we've had today, you know, Rockford is a very large school district. I mean, that's no surprise. And with that, there are going to be some tougher decisions, some complex decisions that need to get made that aren't ultimately going to satisfy everybody, right? So, one of the things that again, that I hope to bring to the board, you know, is just a, you know, a baseline of kind of coming to conclusions based off of facts and how we can best ultimately serve the community. That's a little bit on the rigid and on the hard side. On the softer side, I love engaging the kids in this community. This school district is actually fantastic. You go to a football game, even just walk around downtown and you see some of the engagement you gave some of the students we have, I mean, they're engaging. They will talk to you. They will say hi. They will smile. You go to some of the other school districts in the state, that's not necessarily the case, you know? So, a lot of that is based off of the interactions they have in school and a lot of that's based on the interactions that they have at home. So, I can only hope to kind of be part of that and helping to support and continue that as part of the school board.
Charlie, two minutes for closing remarks.
Yes, I just want to make sure that you put an old person on the board because it's very unbalanced right now and, and I, I would hate to see that bias coming out in, in the voting. So, I would appreciate being elected to this board as an old person. So, in addition to that, I, I would like to see all the activity that goes on in running the school district that goes to create academic excellence and a, and a better, and improvement in the academics. I hear rumor that there's a, you know, a move to buy electric buses. And quite frankly, I think that's ridiculous to, to spend that kind of money when air conditioning is needed in almost all of the schools. And, and I've talked to parents whose children come home dripping wet with sweat and that are, that's the kind of thing that affects academic achievement. Electric buses have no, no benefit to achieve academically other than maybe version signaling that, you know, they, you know, have an, an electric bus. So, I'm concerned because the, the studies I see, there's a, there's 25 or maybe a little bit more percentage of students that are not even up to reading level in the Rockford Public School System. And if you multiply that out, that's like 2,000 students that are being failed by the system, not being able to even read at, at level or do, you know, math at the same, at the same level coming out of this system. There's a high graduation rate, but there's a, in my mind, Rockford has all the resources to be able to improve that and to use the activity that goes on to improve. to improve.
You guys are out of EBA.
Kelly, two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. I hope that I've taken steps to earn your votes today. And I'd like to take a moment to thank you for being here, for demonstrating hope and a commitment toward the community, to our students. We have a remarkable public school district, serving a remarkable community of more than 7,700 children and youth. We have exceptional teachers. We have exceptional administrators. We have an exceptional security team. We have exceptional bus drivers and a brilliant transportation department. We have the best pair of pros in the entire state of Michigan, if not the entire country. We have truly exceptional and talented students. Rockford is a top 10 school district in the state of Michigan because everyone I listed has gone the extra mile to ensure that we're providing students with exceptional learning environments. In this last year, more than 3,000 individuals in our community responded to the Rams 12 survey. That tells me that our community cares about what we're doing. And importantly, 457 current students participated in the survey. That's remarkable. Our students have a voice, and they're incredibly important stakeholders in the success of Rams 12. In Rams 12, we outline a bold mission for our public schools. And it's our shared commitment to this mission that will make it a reality. Rockford Public Schools is committed to fostering a rigorous, cohesive learning environment that challenges and supports each student, equipping them for success now and in the future. Finally, I'd like to ask you to also consider voting for Andrea, Jake, and Tricia. I have worked in Rockford, I've served in Rockford, shoulder to shoulder with all three. They were instrumental in hiring Dr. Matthews, and their commitment to Rockford is also exceptional. They really are some of the kindest and smartest people I know.
Jake, two minutes for closing remarks.
Sure. Yeah, so there is a lot packed into a name. And the name of our school is Rockford Public Schools. To me, that kind of means a couple of things. One, as a public school, everyone's welcome. I don't care where you come from, what your background is, what your income is, what your gender identity is, what your race is. I don't care any of that. You're welcome at Rockford Public School. The other piece is Rockford. And for me, as a life, pretty much a lifelong citizen, someone who came here, you know, I was talking to another constituent on the Rockford Area Community Foundation who talked about what does Rockford stand for and what does it mean? And they said, you know, Rockford is a community that helps their neighbors. And people are willing to roll up their sleeves, doesn't matter what their perspective is, it doesn't matter if there's differences. We're here to help each other. And I sometimes worry that there is a, a small voice out there that, a small amount of people with a loud voice perhaps, but try to focus on hate and division, especially when it comes to the public schools, and promote, you know, rumors and falsities and things like that, that, that drive separation, that drive division. And that's, quite frankly, not what Rockford's about, and that's not what public schools are about. If you look at the facts and if you look at the history of Rockford Public Schools, we're doing some amazing things. And we're continuing to build. As Andrea mentioned, we hit number 10 in, in M-Step rankings and academically. We've got a ton of innovative programs going on, both for students and for staff in tons of ways that we're supporting in. And I hope that if you vote for me, we, I can help continue that. The bottom line is this, you've got four candidates here who have been supported by teachers, by support staff, and the state of Michigan's Education Association as people who can help move that vision forward, move that agenda forward. Not our own vision, not our own agenda, but that of the communities to make our education system even better. Thank you.
Jason, two minutes for closing remarks.
Well, I, I don't know if I mentioned this, but I am not endorsed by the REA and the RESPA. Not that I don't have, not that I have a problem with them. We had a great conversation. But I think I know why, because I'm an independent thinker. As I talked today, it's, there's a good chance I might come across a time, isn't it? But that's because I want you to know why I stand out, why I'm different. If you elect four candidates endorsed by REA and RESPA, what you get is a board with six people who think the same thing. I don't know if that's good. In my professional associations, I'm known as the guy with no part. I'm the guy who connects with both sides of the aisle. And that would be my goal, is to see those blind spots that people on one side might have that might cause them to inadvertently exclude new people in an effort to include others, that might cause them to just go to shift to the opposite bias in an effort to end a certain bias. And as a school board and as a community member, I don't think what comes down from Lansing and DC is always in our best interest. And one thing I think we can improve as a board is our lobbying, our advocacy toward fighting those things or at least adjusting and only minimally complying when that's necessary to fit the desires of our community. So I think that is an important thing, to have independent thinkers who can find the truly inclusive solution, who can find equality of opportunity, who can find diverse ideas. So that is what I'll advocate for if you elect me. Like I said, I can come across as negative because I'm trying to show you what's different. But you get me on the board, I'll be that guy that brings the extremes together, finds the truly inclusive, truly equitable solutions, not the ones that just give that appearance.
Well, that wraps up all the feedback from the candidates. On behalf of Rockford Forward, we want to thank Rockford Public Schools for hosting tonight, for all of you that are taking the most precious commodity, which is time and attention, and to all of you for the courage to not only run and lead and give more of yourselves than you've already given to move this district forward. So let's give them a round of applause. And thank you for answering the questions. All right, guys.